Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 24th, 2015 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Appreciate everyone being here, and those of you joining us at home on PAC 14, thank you. We have a relatively short agenda this evening, but would like to just say, first of all, if you happen to have a cellphone, if you wouldn't mind turning that off or setting it on vibrate, and if you have to take an important call, please do so in the hallway. Emergency exits are out the door to your right and to the right down the stairs. With that being said, I would like to invite Pastor Julie Lewis from Rock and Walking United Methodist Church to deliver the City of Vacation. Pastor Lewis.
Let us pray. Oh God, we thank you for this time to gather together to do the business of the city. Lord, the government is an important thing. Without government, we have chaos. And Lord, it is the duty of all people to participate. So, Lord, we ask for wisdom and discernment. We ask for your grace and mercy. And where there is chaos, help us bring order. And where there is a lack of peace, help us bring peace. Lord, we lift all of this up into your hands. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Lewis. Please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some special guests with us this evening. So first up, we've got Eastern Shore International Mountain Biking Association. Trez, how about you and Mike to come forward?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. City Council, really appreciate the opportunity. I'd like to thank Public Works, the City Park Committee, Wycomico County Health Department, and the Ward Museum, as well as the community of Salisbury for being able to speak here tonight. On behalf of the Eastern Shore EMB, I'd just like to say that thank you for having us on the agenda tonight and voting in favor of our project. By accepting our MOU, allowing us to redesign and maintain the small trail system, it's going to become more sustainable and will be able to provide this opportunity for the community. The opportunities that we have are health, wellness, and education. The area of the park that has been, had become overgrown and only useful to maybe homeless who had taken up residency there, kind of pointed out that some of the problems that these single-track trails could actually eliminate or help with. These trails are healthy. They're used for walking, for running, riding outside, and good physical health is something that we've been striving to promote. The opportunity to get away from the traffic, not just because you can walk outside of your house or near your house doesn't mean it's often friendly or feels compelling enough that you'll continue to do it. So, a lot of times, people say that they get on the health kick, they try to get started, and then they soon realize why. They gave up riding their bike, walking, and running, is that it's not as easy and as fun as it can be with traffic and streetlights, sidewalks, stuff like that tends to take the fun out of it, and these trails can help do that. They can also provide wellness. Just knowing that you have a place to go after work can ease your mind during work, and when times get trying, you know you have a place that you can go do a couple laps and really loosen up. This is something that we feel is really important, and with the City Park being centrally located to many people where people live, sometimes you only have 20 minutes, a half an hour, to get any exercise in. You don't really have time to drive to a place like a sports club, you know, where you might be working out in a gym. It's more, it's an expense that not all families can afford. But the City Park trails are definitely family-friendly. It's outdoors-oriented, of course, and it accentuates the other parts of the park. So, you'd be able to get from the Ward Museum to the zoo a bit more easily and more fun, you know? Wouldn't just be a direct shot. You're not just crossing the street. You could spend more time with your family there. In order to go mountain biking, cross-country running, and hiking, you have to be able to practice. And with this new set of trails, we'll be able to increase people's endurance, be able to hone their skills, and this is something that's really needed to be able to go to different places. You can't just take your kids mountain biking at the snap, you know, at the snap of your fingers. It's not something that you're going to drive two or three hours, spend a lot of money on equipment, and then find out they're not interested, they don't have the skills to do it yet, or that they're just not motivated enough. You really have to practice, and that's one of the things that I really feel the City Park's great for. We can also teach about education as far as mountain biking goes, across-country running, and the skills themselves. We could also educate about land management, land stewardship, and land preservation. It's necessary to keep some of the areas that we have green in the first place, and by simply providing a small strip of land that people can use to access them in orderly fashion where you feel safe, you can take your kids there and you can train and have a better skill set when you're done without, like I said, having to get into a car. It's one of the biggest problems that we have with so many water trails and great places to vacation. Our destination's gorgeous, but to some degree, the ability, the journey itself is what people are after these days, and sometimes this is what it takes to connect the different spots together. You create a way that people can journey between them, and then everything becomes a much nicer way of being. The Salisbury City Park trails, although they are a small facet of this growing gem in the City Park, the trails will connect the, make connections between the park and make it even more dynamic. From the zoo to the Ward Museum is where these trails will be located, and they will be able to connect the people as well as those locations. This project itself really brought our club a lot closer together, you know? We don't have a lot of different projects, but the ones that we do have have been very successful, and over the past four years, all the land managers that we've written to and asked permission from have granted us the ability to get this far. And this is one of the first projects that we started on, and so it's really exciting tonight to be able to, you know, accept the fact that we've made it through this gauntlet, you know? We've actually produced what we had intended to. And so, it also brought back a lot of the clubs together. Just in recent history, with our fundraiser Bike Salisbury and the Salisbury Running Club and our group worked together, which was, you know, high, superior to using the trails to a certain degree, is actually having all these groups be able to function as one. And so, we hope to also include groups like 4H and the Scouts and other youth groups throughout the community to be able to provide the maintenance for these trails as well as using them. And of course, we can also teach the sustainable trail building that has gotten, you know, was the thing that I started doing and really got me interested in the trails in the first place. You know, we have a website. It is www.esimba.org, and that is where you can find most of the information about our trails. The map for this trail system will be up there pretty shortly. This Friday, we're doing a movie night where we're going to have kids decorate their own helmets, or they can get helmets from us. We're going to do that again November 19th. Those events are in Ocean City and in Berlin, but we look forward to growing our group in Salisbury as well and finding more folks like yourselves that would be interested in joining our club, learning how to ride mountain bikes, even hiking and walking the trails. And then December 10th, we're going to have an art show at the Globe where we take bicycle seats and make them into art, similar to Salisbury's skate park. I hope we can do as well, as close as well as they had done recently. So, I really commend them on their efforts and just another facet to this gem that the City Park is for Salisbury.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about some of the future plans that we have, some of the future projects. One of the more recent ones was the connector from Salisbury to Pemberton, and we're not sure exactly how that's going to go so far. We talked to Mark Cotter, who's done a lot of the legwork, and I don't know how it's going to go with the county saying no to some of the Rails to Trails initiatives and all that, but we'll see. We'll work really hard on that one. Another one is the trail that's supposed to go from West Ocean City to Assateague, and that one's going along pretty good. Is it?
Lower Shore Land Trust.
Lower Shore Land Trust.
Bike Ways Grant for $30,000 to engineer, to start engineering on that.
And on the topic of grants, I don't think Trez mentioned that we are talking with the Health Department about getting a grant to help us with some of the cost of these signs that we hope you approve today, which we think you're going to approve. And then, one that's been sort of on the horizon for a long time, we've thought about for a long time, we were hoping to move into, and I know right now this is a little bit of a controversial subject. I even backed away from it for a while, but I will mention it. When Gary Mackis first asked for this donation of land of Naylor Mill to expand the Henry S. Parker Stadium, I told him, "We wanted what was best for the people of Wycomico County and the city of Salisbury." And at first, we really didn't know what they thought, and now we're hearing more and more what they think, so I think some people are here to speak of that today. So, here's what we think about Naylor Mill. We like sharing trails. I actually haven't ridden the Salisbury City Park trails or Naylor Mill in a long time because I'm out there, you know, weed cutting and leaf blowing and all that. I was working Sunday, I was working last Monday. We like to take people out there. We like the feedback. When the runners say, "Who put this bridge in here?" And we have to explain, this is a really cool initiative where someone built the bridge, and we talked to Public Works, and they asked for it as a donation, they moved it in, and, you know, it's a little bridge going across a culvert where people would, people would do an endo on their bike and crash and stuff, and we worked together and we fixed it. Instead of saying, "No, it's a liability, somebody might get hurt, we'll get sued," we worked through it. So, in the long run, we like sharing these things, and I did want to tell you a couple of the things that Naylor Mill has done in the past and what I hope it'll do in the future, is for an example, people from all over the Eastern Shore come to Salisbury City Park and Naylor Mill. They ride there. When Corinne Banks from West Ocean City was on her way to become the ex-TARA East Coast Trail Running Champion, she trained there. I know because I was helping her with the bike skills. So, I'd like you all to consider what the people have to say. I know they have a lot of things on their minds, and I'll let them say all that. But I appreciate you giving us a chance to talk about what we do, the health advantages, all the other possibilities, and thanks again for working with us on the City Park and for accepting our MOU so we could do it in the first place, because it was a real mess. And it was a pleasure to clean it all up, and we'll keep on doing that. Thanks.
Mike, I think if I can, real quick, I think this has been one of the most exciting partnerships over the last few years. No doubt, the trails in the City Park were in need of assistance, and not just in terms of land management as a partnership, but in terms of partnering to maintain a variety of public assets. I think there's a real model here in terms of community organization with a vested interest and the city partnering together without letting some of those, you know, typical stumbling blocks get in the way.
Right. We're just focused on objectives and trying to think of positive changes.
And continuing to promote one of the things that's most been, I think, most important to the citizens of Salisbury, Wycomico County, which is its bikeability.
Mm-hmm.
And enter plug for bike-able community.
Matt Drew's been there with us all along, I'll tell you what, he's been one of our best advocates.
Absolutely.
Very, very good thinker.
While you have the microphone and lecturing, could you say a couple of words about bike safety? I know this is sort of something that's in your minds all the time.
In regard to the youth?
In regards, pretty much, to the youth, yeah.
The youth, well, we do encourage helmets all the time. Anytime we have a function, we wear helmets. We do the Berlin Christmas Parade. We wear helmets in the Berlin Christmas Parade. We do the bike rodeos. Take a kid mountain biking day. We have a bike safety check before we do any of those events. We have several people who are accomplished bike mechanics. They'll work on the kids' bikes, show them a little bit, and we teach them the little acronyms to help them remember, you know, the tire pressure and whatnot and the chain. And one of the biggest things lately has not been mountain biking, it's been street riding, and we've tried here and there to talk to some of the kids in town. Some of them are known as the wheelie boys or whatever, you know, they ride the wheelies, and it's all fun until they start playing chicken in traffic or they're, we call it salmoning, they're swimming upstream. We're doing something else that is dangerous for the driver, it's dangerous for them as the rider. So, it's good to find dangerous streets and convert them to a good street, put in a bike lane, or say, advocate for people to use a different route, things like that. But you really sometimes have to stop and say, "Hey, don't ride like a knucklehead. Do this, ride this. Hey, you know, if you go this way, if you follow the traffic, you're not going to get hit as often, and people do die." You have to tell them that they could die. So, there's a lot to it. It's not just tell the kid to put a helmet on, you know? There's really a lot to it. I enjoy the bike rodeos a lot. We did one for St. Francis de Sales, and I don't know how many kids we took. Do you have a number on that at all, 100?
I was over 200.
Number 200?
238.
238 is the number he has, and we took so many kids through obstacle courses and had a great big ride from St. Francis through the college, using all the traffic laws, following all the traffic laws, came back out, came back in on Riverside Drive. And we had a scraped knee, you know? It happens. We missed a loose handlebar or something, we fixed it on the road. It was really good. It was a good event. And some of our other bike rodeos, even if we only have a dozen, have been equally positive, and the parents love it. They love, you know, how enthusiastic the kids were and what they took home, and we try to get them little things. We're working to get them some like tire lever kits and things, and patch kits, giveaways. So, thank you.
I could mention one thing about safety that I recently read, which was a road rider who had been a BMX guy in his youth, and as a car was cutting him off and he had to bunny hop onto the sidewalk, he realized he had done it without even trying. So, a lot of the skills that people learn when they ride their bikes off-road then become things that might save their life on the road, and it's as simple as being able to bunny hop your bike, you know? Not everyone learns that skill, and it's not necessarily easy, but when you use the mountain bike trails, it's something that you kind of have to do, and so you get better at it on a small trail, and you go to a bigger trail and you get better at it. And like I said, then it becomes like a response instead of, you know, just a reaction. And it's just another way that, you know, using different styles of cycling still is certainly, cycling at all kind of works together.
That is true. I've seen and heard a lot of people say that mountain biking helped them survive on the road or in a road race or anything else like that, because it's a different type of riding, and it helps your skill set.
One other item, because you brought it up, the connection to Pemberton. As you may know, in last week's work session, City Council discussed funding that we put in the budget this year for the completion of the Urban Greenway, which will link ultimately, the plan is to ultimately link all the way from Shoemaker to Pemberton.
And I hadn't had any time to look at that and look at the two different plans, the Rails to Trails versus that one, but I was hoping to continue because there were some real good ideas in there, and Matt Drew's the one who told me about that in the first place, and then we met Mark Cotter through our fundraiser.
Well, and, you know, I think both Mark and Mr. Drew can speak to the potential linkage between that rail-to-trail connection from Heveron or even Mardella Springs into the downtown area would actually be a logical linkage to this east-west.
And I think a lot of it is education. I think a lot of it is a real quick reaction to say, "What bad could happen behind my house along this old trail," instead of, "What good could happen, or what could I use it for?" And you may want to talk to the people from Bay Bridge East, because that's a real nice Rails to Trails system. The W&amp;O D Trail, the Custis Trail, you know, all these trails around Washington DC and...
All the more in Indianapolis.
All of that, yeah. And then I have something for Matt. Can't remember right now, but yeah, appreciate that.
Just one thing, you mentioned a lot about the, we're talking about the bike trails, but they're also great to walk and/or hike. I have walked them many, many times. I love it. It's beautiful. There are a lot of little, really nice sites back there, especially now that it's all cleaned up. I think I successfully managed to avoid most of the parts that would qualify as hiking, but they're still fun to walk, and there are some real challenges in there if you choose to take that path, but it's just a nice walk, too, if you choose a different way. And I love the idea of these wayfinding signs so you can figure out which way that is before you're already at the top.
And they will be coded as well, just like ski and mountain bike trails are usually coded with black diamond being the hardest one and a green circle being the easiest, and a blue square is the middle. I just learned at our, the City Council meeting the other day, that one of the members, Jack, is, I think his name's Jack.
City Park Committee.
Just City Park Meeting, yeah, sorry. The City Park Meeting, he was a birder, and he said that out at Naylor Mill, the University of Delaware wanted a small place to study bird migration, and because of the mix of the trees out there, they used that for their bird migration, because when you do bird counts, you extrapolate, you know? You look at a small set of places and you count the birds coming through during migration, and then you use math to figure out what the overall picture might be. You just reminded me of that.
Thank you.
Gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is, we have a presentation by Mr. Mike Dunn, Red, White, and Boom. Mike, I'm going to send you up there first, and then I'm going to come up there and join you if you want.
Okay. Mr. President, thank you very much for allowing me to be here today. I'm going to continue the theme that I just heard with the ESIMBA, the level of cooperation that we started with nothing four years ago, and we now have in place this, it's not perfect because nothing's perfect, but we have an extraordinary public-private model of success for Red, White, and Boom. The city of Salisbury and Mayor Iarton got all of this started by saying yes four years ago. The City Council followed that up by making an actual monetary contribution in the budget, and you're continuing that. You are the largest single sponsor, so thank you very much to the mayor and the council for that. This year, we had two major sponsors step up for the first time, that being Robinson's Family of Businesses and John Robinson, and Sandy Fitzgerald Angelo and Pohanka of Salisbury, who stepped up in a big way. On the Fourth of July, rain came through at 5:30, and in my little corner of the world, you'd have thought the world was coming to an end, but you learn a really important thing, which is guess what? People will show up on the Fifth, and they did, and it was wonderful. Our home this year was Wycomico County Stadium. Wycomico County was a wonderful partner, the Civic Center, their tourism department. I had the pleasure of speaking at the county council meeting several weeks ago to thank them, and that's what I'm doing here tonight, is this is easy, this is a thank you, and it's applauding our partners. The Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce is a partner also, but specifically here within the city of Salisbury. Salisbury Fire Department Chief Rick Hoppus, Darren Scott, Jimmy Gladwell, Try Townsend at Quarter of Six, he's got the big fire truck out there. Do I put this flag up or don't I? I don't know, Try, give me a minute. They came back the next night. Salisbury Police Department Chief Barbara Duncan, Pete Tyler, Cheryl Rantz, Bull was in our first meeting, Julia, the mayor's office, Cheryl McBride, Donna, and Tom Stevenson and Julia, Mike Mulds, Director of Public Works. I think the week before Red, White, and Boom, he met me in the Civic Center parking lot to make sure that they knew what we wanted, and it's an extraordinary level of cooperation. The Ladies Auxiliary at Salisbury Fire Department Station Two, they sell our Red, White, and Boom t-shirts every year, and they're so helpful. And of course, PAC 14, and Craig Twilley has had the best seat for Red, White, and Boom for three years in a row. This past year, he was on the very top of County Stadium, and if you get an opportunity, he always downloads the Red, White, and Boom show onto PAC 14. So, again, it's, I want to address, Mr. Spies a few years ago made a kind of a plea to make sure that we fund this and how can we get more businesses involved. I'm proud to say that we raised nearly $40,000 this year alone. We have an endowment, a permanent endowment that we started last year at the Community Foundation, which should grow to just about $20,000 right now. It's funny, when you have to delay fireworks by a day, one of the things that you do is guarantee a rain date, but then when you got to use the rain date, it costs you some money. So, our budget costs us about $3,000 to ensure that they occurred on the Fifth. And again, individual and corporate donations and group donations from places like the VFW and the Elks and the American Legion and the Red Men, and so many civic organizations and individuals. We had a GoFundMe account that we started this year that we had more than $2,000 raised and more than 33 individuals. So, all told, we probably have nearly 200 donors these days, and I write personal thank you notes, and they've just been ordered. So, to, I wanted to kind of say, "Thank you. You guys did give some seed money, and we're being very responsible with it." And so, that's it. Thank you very much, those who attended. It was fantastic. The show is wonderful, and I'm thrilled to report that for the fourth year in a row, we have not had a single public safety incident. As thousands upon thousands of us gather, we have never had a public safety incident, and I think that that's an extraordinary credit to the men and women of our police and fire departments, and also, of course, to us as citizens who, at least on one night, we learned how to behave pretty well. So, it's all good news. So, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'll stand here.
Come join us.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Well, look, Mike, one of the reasons that I got involved and ran for City Council was frustration with the way things were, and one of the things that I saw was that, you know, we were a community that couldn't even agree to support its own fireworks show. And so, there was a devastating lack of pride, and that's how I felt about this community. And I'm very proud to say that we are a partner in this process, very grateful that you have found other partners in this process. Thank you to Pohanka and to Sandy. But what we want to say tonight is just, not only, I appreciate your thank yous, and I think we all do, on behalf of city staff, but we want to say thank you. So, we have this certificate of appreciation for another successful year to you and your team, to the Red, White, and Boom Committee. So, thank you, Mike Dunn. Thank you for everything that you're doing for our community.
Thank you very much. Our pleasure.
All right. I have one more presentation this evening before we move into our legislative agenda, and that is a presentation to honor our Wellness Committee. As some of you may know, the city of Salisbury's Wellness Committee was, let's call it dormant for a while, and, you know, we recognize that leading by example is important, and I think city staff recognizes that. So, first of all, I want to thank Ms. Miller for leading that charge. Jennifer Miller, our Assistant Director of Internal Services for Procurement and Parking. Excuse me, I haven't slept in three days. I really haven't. But Jennifer, actually, I think even if I had slept, that title is a little difficult. I may have tripped over. But Jennifer, we appreciate you and appreciate your leadership. That being said, I want to say that also, this has become a priority through becoming a healthy, eating, active, living city. As a heal city, I mean, there are several environmental programs that we have undertaken, but this is an internal and health-oriented program that we have undertaken, and again, city staff has done a fantastic job. So, after a long hiatus, the city of Salisbury reinstated its Wellness Committee in May of 2014 with the hope of encouraging city employees to embrace a healthier lifestyle while also reducing healthcare expenses to the city. The committee was established to improve the wellness of the city employees through education of physical, intellectual, social, and occupational behaviors that impact a healthy lifestyle. Just to get into some of the specifics, that means that we have, we have had city employees exercising 150 minutes per week. We have had city employees engaged in walking, biking, running. Mr. DeCarlo, you'd know something about that. Gardening even, yoga, and swimming, so all fantastical things, all fantastic things, excuse me. And then, we have, we have had four, at least four departments engaged, 22 from the Police Department, four from the Fire Department, seven from Public Works, and 23 from within other departments in the Government Office Building, including Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance. So, what I'd like to do now is just identify and acknowledge the hard work of each of those individuals, and if you're here, if you wouldn't mind coming forward. Chris DeVoe. And I'm going to ask you to stay up here with me if you wouldn't mind. All right. Shanita Lewis-Watson. Donna Hague. Diane Nelson. Julie English. Your entire department participated.
Not present at this session.
Pat Stewart. Ladies and gentlemen, your Wellness Committee members.
Yeah, do you mind coming around behind council and we'll get a picture real quick?
I'm sitting.
Can I get in here?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's good.
Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the legislative agenda as presented. Entertained a motion to adopt the legislative agenda?
Some move. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussions?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to add immediately following the consent agenda, Resolution Number 2537 to waive the capacity fees for homes on Johnson Pond and Resolution 2538 to approve the pilot agreement for homes on Johnson Pond.
All right.
What was the first amendment?
Waive the capacity fee for homes on Johnson's Pond. It's 2537. They were emailed to us.
2537 and 2538?
Yes. 37th the capacity fee, the pilot's 38.
Any further discussion?
Need a second on that.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And all those in favor of the amended legislative agenda, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Some move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Nichols.
Hello.
Good evening.
We have on tonight's consent agenda, the July 13th, 2015 closed session minutes, the July 20th closed session minutes, July 20th work session minutes, July 27th regular meeting minutes, and July 27th closed session minutes. Resolution Number 2533, accepting a donation of a portable stage and steps from Joey Gilkerson, resident and business owner from Salisbury for public event usage. Resolution Number 2534, accepting the donation of mountain bike trail wayfinding signage for the city park. Resolution Number 2535, accepting funds awarded through a grant from program Open Space for basketball court renovations at Waterside Park in Salisbury. And Resolution Number 2536, authorizing the capacity fee of the city's comprehensive connection charge be waived for development known as Pohanka Vehicle Storage at West Gordy Road and Windsor Drive. And that would be it.
All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. And we thank Asimba again for the donation.
Absolutely.
All right. Next item on the agenda is ordinance Number 2346. This is the general fund budget transfer for local government insurance trust.
Excuse me, we skipped the two resolutions we just added.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
I went ahead and put those on the back of the page and...
Leap deprivation.
That's right. We'll blame it on that.
We'll blame it on that. You're all good.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2537. Entertained a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Glanz.
Good evening. Resolution 2537, a resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, authorizing the capacity fees of the city's comprehensive connection charge to be waived for a development to be known as the Homes on Johnson's Pond and Affordable Housing Development. Whereas Village of Hope Incorporated, Homes for America, Inc., and Osprey Property Company, LLC have requested a waiver of the capacity fee for its development to be known as the Homes on Johnson's Pond, which will be located on Lake Street. And whereas the proposed development requires approximately 63 equivalent dwelling units of water and sewer service. And whereas Village of Hope Incorporated, Homes for America, Inc., and Osprey Properties Company, LLC have requested a capacity fee waiver of 63 equivalent dwelling units. And whereas the current capacity fee of 63 equivalent dwelling units is $222,579. And whereas one of the city's goals is to encourage the development of affordable housing in the city of Salisbury. And whereas the city council approved a capacity fee waiver process under Resolution Number 1211 for public sponsor or affordable housing, which means any dwelling unit built or financed under a government program, regulation, or binding agreement that limits for at least 10 years the price or rent charged for the unit in order to make the unit affordable to households earning less than 60,000, oh, excuse me, 60% of the area median income adjusted for family size. And whereas the Village of Hope Incorporated, Homes for America Incorporated, and Osprey Property Company, LLC have committed to providing affordable housing at the Homes on Johnson's Pond to at least households earning less than 60% of the area median income adjusted for family size at least, for at least 40 years. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Salisbury, Maryland approves the waiver of 63 EDUs of capacity fee for Village of Hope, Homes for America, and Osprey Property Company co-sponsor Affordable Housing Development to be known as the Homes on Johnson's Pond. The above resolution was it?
You don't have to.
Okay.
She's waiting. We can go ahead.
All right. Is there any discussion?
Just one question. Do you happen to have on your fingertips the area median income?
Theo told me. I think it was in our work session material.
I think that we have someone in the audience that might have. I think this is important for the public to know.
I'd be very impressed if you had this.
I think it was in our work session material, but I don't remember the number.
Would you take the, take the stage, please?
Good evening. Andrew Hansen with Osprey Property Company. And the question specifically was, what is 60% of the area median income for Wycomico County? And I can give you, based on household size, for four and a half persons for 2015, and this is adjusted annually, it's $47,310.
Family of?
Four and a half persons, which, don't ask me to answer that question, but there's a formula that they use.
One in the oven, what? What is the significance of four and a half persons?
I think that's a formula that's used to go into what a three-bedroom, a person that would rent a three-bedroom would roughly have there.
Well, when we find a four and a half-person family in Wycomico County, you can send them our way.
Thank you.
Other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda, Resolution 2538, the accompanying resolution. Entertained a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Glanz.
Resolution Number 2538, a resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, supporting the redevelopment of a Village of Hope with new affordable housing to be known as the Homes on Johnson's Pond and providing a payment in lieu of taxes pilot to the development. Whereas the Village of Hope has requested support from the city of Salisbury, Maryland for redeveloping their campus located at 1,001 Lake Street, Salisbury, Maryland, which was originally approved for an 84-unit housing in 1998 and to date, 14 units of housing have been built serving women and children who are at risk for homelessness. And whereas the city of Salisbury, Maryland recognizes that there is a significant need for quality housing units in Salisbury for persons with low or limited incomes, especially those who may be at risk, homeless, or recently have completed a transitional housing program designed to assist at-risk individuals. And whereas the Village of Hope has engaged Homes for America, Inc., and Osprey Property Company, LLC to assist in redeveloping the campus to include 63 new units of affordable housing to be known as Homes on Johnson's Pond. And whereas the Village of Hope Incorporated, Homes for America Incorporated, and Osprey Property Company, LLC have committed to providing affordable housing at their Homes on Johnson's Pond apartments to households earning less than 60% of the area median income adjusted for family size. And whereas the Village of Hope currently is exempt from real estate taxes for their development. And whereas the Village of Hope has requested a payment in lieu of taxes for their development to be known as the Homes on Johnson's Pond, a partnership with Homes for America Incorporated and Osprey Property Company, LLC that will not be exempt from real estate taxes. And whereas the city of Salisbury desires to provide the proposed limit, proposed payment in lieu of taxes. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Salisbury approves a pilot agreement between co-owners Homes for America Incorporated, Village of Hope Incorporated, and Osprey Property Company, LLC and/or the partnership entity to be formed by these entities. And the city of Salisbury provided the project is constructed and operated as a rental housing project for persons with lower limited income in accordance with the guidelines of the Department of Housing and Community Development. The pilot agreement will provide for a reduction of city Salisbury real estate taxes in the amount of $100 per unit per year if the property continues to provide affordable housing for persons of lower income for a period of 40 years from the date the building is granted a certificate of occupancy in terms of the same as or similar to those set forth in the attached draft payment in lieu of taxes, in lieu of tax agreement as such drafted, as such draft my, there's typo there, modified by the city solicitor to be, to meet all legal requirements. And yeah, there you go.
Any comments?
Yes. There is one error on line 10. That should be 15 units currently, not 14. We'll make a motion to amend line 10 to read to date 15 units of housing rather than 14.
Reserve a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none on the amendment, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anything else?
There's just a line 49, as such draft my be, I think maybe?
Okay. I think, can that be changed administratively, editorially? Thank you. So I'll just take the opportunity to say, I appreciate this. I want to say more than anything else, very supportive of the mission of Village of Hope and for all Village of Hope board of directors have done for women and children in Wycomico County and in Salisbury. So very supportive and happy to move this forward tonight. I mentioned this at work session and I mentioned it tonight because I know we've got a partner in the room who's done two projects in Salisbury now and, you know, hopefully we'll do more. But I do want to make sure that we, as a community, move forward by addressing housing affordability issues in this area through a more mixed income approach in the future. I want to make sure that we're not doing, contributing to the segregation of low-income housing in certain areas and I don't think this project does that. I think this project addresses a specific need and I'm very excited about it. But something that I hope we can work on together in the future, finding a policy approach to address that. So I thank you. If there's nothing else, I'll call a question.
I just want to say that I think Sister Mary Elizabeth is smiling down on this project because I think that was one of her dreams by working with her. I think a lot of her dreams were similar to this, where they wanted 84. And now it's coming, it's coming to light and I think she's going to be very happy.
Thank you, Sheena. All right. With that, all those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Next item on the agenda is ordinance Number 2346. We'll do that now.
Yeah, we'll do that.
For a second reading. This is the Local Government Insurance Trust budget amendment. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2346.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Tillman, thank you.
It's an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving amendment of the FY 2015 general fund budget to appropriate additional funding for local government insurance trust. Whereas the local government insurance trust has informed the city that additional funds are needed for an insurance-related expenditure and whereas the city's FY 2015 budget does not contain an appropriation sufficient to cover this expenditure, now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, the city's fiscal year 2015 general fund budget being as hereby amended as follows. Number one, increase current surplus account 01000-469810 by $41,250. Increase the debt services and other uses budget by an equivalent amount.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is ordinance Number 2352. This is also for second reading. This is the Backyard Chickens ordinance. Entertained a motion to approve? Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Mr. Tillman.
All right. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to amend with chapter 6.04 Dogs, Fowl, and Other Animals of the Salisbury City Code to add definitions related to urban chickens and enacting chapter 6.05 to authorize the keeping of chickens subject to certain regulations. Whereas the city of Salisbury recognized the benefits of locally-produced food and whereas the city of Salisbury currently prohibits the keeping of chickens in the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury and whereas the city deems it to be in the best interest of the city of Salisbury to allow residents to keep a limited number of chickens for providing eggs for residents' personal consumption. And whereas the city council of Salisbury, Maryland desires to modify chapter 6.04 Salisbury City Code and enact chapter 6.05 Salisbury City Code to add definitions related to urban chickens and to authorize the keeping of chickens subject to certain regulations as set forth below and find such actions reasonably furthers the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury that chapter 6.04 be modified and that chapter 6.05 be added as follows. And the change in 6.04 is highlighted in line 41, excuse me, 40 and 41. And then the additional chapter 6.05 is set forth subsequently and includes the significant amendment that was discussed previously in 6.05.140, which adds that in addition to the avian influenza or bird flu or other disease determined by the Maryland Secretary of Agriculture. So if the secretary determines that a disease requires culling of the flock, then that will fit here as well as the avian flu. And other than that, it just regulates the details. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to read them or answer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I think we have one from the audience too that may not have gotten to do a slip yet, but I ran into Mr. Purdue accidentally in Walmart, not literally, but, and we had a discussion about this and one of the suggestions was perhaps adding a requirement for regular testing of the birds. Talked to some people in the industry as well, DPI and others, and generally it's so short-lived that bird will probably be expired before you would have the testing or before you would know the results of the testing. So I'm not really sure that that works, but in Iowa where they have recently experienced a pandemic that is moving its way in our direction and is expected to be pretty significant, one of the worst ever for avian flu, 10% of the avian flu was in backyard flocks. The beginning of this cycle, this epidemic, was in California in backyard flocks. And I'm very concerned that anyone who endeavors to do this be extremely cautious about walking into, from their backyard and into the aviary downtown or into the zoo. into, from their backyard and into the aviary downtown, or into the zoo, or any number of areas, but even to the grocery store or somewhere where someone who is working on a farm might follow behind you and track that. It's so easily transmitted. I am concerned about, I still have, as you all know, I've shared them a number of times, quite a few concerns about this, the flu, the resource demands that it's going to make on our animal services that already can't keep up with cats and dogs and everyday animals that we're seeing now. I can't bring myself to support it. The people that I've talked to, and maybe because they know that I don't support it, I'm getting more comments that, from people that don't than do. Maybe you guys are getting the comments from the people who do support it, and the ones who don't are not contacting you, but I have been contacted by a number of people and they, they are not supportive of it, they don't want it. It's, it's kind of hard to weed out the NIMBY, the not in my backyard, it's okay everywhere else, but not in my backyard, but if with this passing, citywide, it could be in anybody's backyard, and it could be your neighbor on both sides, and they're just not excited about it. And we're, we are pretty rural, we can get two fresh eggs within fifteen minutes from pretty much anywhere in the city, and I just don't think that the reward is, is worth the risk. So that's my piece. I'm not supporting the ordinance tonight, in case you didn't guess.
I'd like to say, to piggyback, oh, I'm sorry, to piggyback on what Councilwoman Mitchell said, I have concerns also, and avian flu is one of them. I too receive calls, and I wish the people that were against urban chickens would come and testify as just against it as they are for it. And they did not, but they, I had made three calls, and then as you know, I go to McDonald's, and I had people saying, well, doesn't Salisbury have other issues besides chickens? So I do think we have other issues in our community to debate on urban chickens or whatever. So I think I'm not going to support it. I was thinking about supporting it, but I'm not going to support it because usually originally when I don't support something, I'll continue not to support it, this is proven, that it's not going to be a hindrance to their neighbors. Now, all I can do is keep an eye, and if someone in TV land has a problem with someone who has chickens in their backyard and not doing the right thing, because everything is outlined that we're supposed to do, but you know people, they're not going to do the right thing. And, but however, I know we can change ordinance back, am I correct? If it doesn't work, this is not forever and ever and ever, and if it works, it can be forever and ever and ever. And I'm hoping for the supporters that it will do work and they'll encourage people to do the right thing. And I don't want to have added work for our animal control officers and understand the MDE is supposed, they're supposed to be following their rules and regulations, so I'm hoping and just asking people who do want these urban chickens to do the right thing and follow the ordinance as it's supposed to be, so I don't have to say to my supporters, oh my, right, I told you so. Okay, that's all I got to say.
One comment. This is all about good husbandry, and if you don't have chickens and you've never had chickens, you shouldn't have chickens until you know something about chickens. So if it's a matter of getting a few chicks at Easter time and keeping them in your backyard, you're ill-advised to do that. You need to learn about husbandry, and that's animal husbandry, and it's how to keep chickens and all animals healthy and keep your environment healthy. That's pretty much it. You know, we can make laws up and down and, you know, outlaw this and that and the other, but still people are going to have chickens in their backyard whether we authorize it or not. In fact, if you go up West Road or Lake Street, you'll see chickens on the side of the road, and those are, at this point, illegally kept. So let's get something behind it that puts regulations behind it so that we can have good monitoring and have the state behind us as far as immunizations, as far as illnesses, et cetera, et cetera. That's it for me, thank you.
Yes, I can understand some of the concerns. However, I'd like to point out that currently, whether you have a white sign or a green sign inside the city limits, you currently have free-range chickens surrounded by the city on county and county areas that are, so you may end up with chickens in your backyard anyway. If they're illegal, and we all know where they are because we pass them all the time, then they need to be addressed. But I think that for those people who, who want this, at least the people that have come and made logical presentation, I would like to have some control over it, and I think that this does that. So I'm, I'm in favor of the ordinance, and I will support it.
We've talked this thing to death, so I'm going to be relatively brief. But, you know, one thing that's worth noting is that nothing that has been discussed before this council over the last two and a half years, I can speak to that, has been instead of discussing something more important. So we have never placed anything on this agenda that has kept something more important off. We have worked long nights, we have worked long hours, we have had six-hour meetings three times a week until we get it done. So, you know, if there's something that should be discussed instead of this, let's put it on the agenda. And I believe we have done that at every turn. That being said, there are now an estimated one-point-one million households in cities in the United States of America that have backyard chickens. There are over twenty thousand municipalities in the United States of America that allow chickens. There are twenty-five of them on the eastern shore of Maryland. If this is Chicken City, USA, as some claim it is, we are late to the party. This is not an area where we're leading, we are not on the cutting edge, this is being done everywhere, literally everywhere, let's get it done. With that said, all those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All opposed?
Aye.
And ordinance two-five, two-three-five-two passes three to two. All right. Now we have several requests for public comment. First going to invite Mr. Michael Lane to come forward, and the subject is empowering the community homeless shelter. Mr. Lane.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Afternoon.
Mayor. I'm Michael Lane, I represent African-American Concerned Men. We're, I have two issues. One is the homeless shelters that's in the city, and that's, the other is build, empowering Church Street. There's a community, there's a building on Church Street that's a historical building that the founder is James Cannon, which he created a program that, that he's a founder of this facility that's owned by a business, the Otten Brothers. And we're talking about uniting our community and empowering the community. We, in Salisbury, we've been hearing from city council and everyone talking about the building the economy, and the population is growing in the city, and, and how they're migrant, they're migrating into Salisbury, and the population is growing. But on Church Street, which is a sterile type, negative image in our community, we're trying to empower the community by obtaining that building from Otten Brothers so that we can create programs for vocational training, education, educational skills, mentoring programs, support programs, something for, I heard a program somebody mentioned about exercising. We have seniors, we have the disabled, we have single parents, we have children playing in the streets. We do not, Church Street do not have a place where the kids can go and play, they play in the street. They're, the teens do not have a basketball court where they can go and play basketball. They, their football team, there isn't any programs that, that the people can be empowered by, by having these on their, in their community. The shelters, there are many, there are few shelters run by the Christian community, but the Christian community isn't addressing the conditions of the, of the homeless. They're giving them food, they're giving them a place to sleep, but they aren't giving them skills, still vocational training skill, the educational skills, there isn't given the resources, information where they can tap into the resources, where they can become independent people for housing, and the medical treatment that they need. Their, their rehabilitation, they aren't getting that information. The churches are taking them in, which is good, but we need to create programs for communities such as in the District Four, for Church Street, that will empower the community. We need to, the only way that the people can have hope, this is America, they talk about the American dream, only way that we can give people that, to help them to reach their dreams, to set goals for themselves, is that we create programs for them, that we give them the tools that they need so they can have hope, and they can take, set goals for themselves, and create something for themselves because they are somebody. I talked with the homeless folk, the homeless folk said, well, you know, we have nothing to do. Thus we, Salisbury is a, is a city that is growing, and that we need a united, a coalition of people, the government, nonprofit organizations, the religious community, the business community, to come together and to draw the funds. We, we talk about how we want to sponsor these, these communities, but within the, within the government, we have sections, divisions within the government for the resolution number twenty-four-eighty, talks about the application of Maryland State Arts Council, and, and how we develop entertainment, the arts and entertainment within the community. It tells us that, but, let me go back, slow down. If we do not create programs within the community, then we can't, we don't know the talents of the children, of the people in the community, so this wouldn't apply to them, so we have to abstract first the talents within the children in the community so that we can then bring that talent out, they can benefit, the neighborhood can benefit and the community as a whole. We talk about, also, there's a, the community, the community development and regulatory, which is the Improvement Act of nineteen ninety-four, what tells us that they will sponsor, they can sponsor, and part, Improvement Act that, that will, and give monies to organizations or to a community that's developing, that's trying to become a light in the city. If we can change the community negative image, then we can, we can, then that community can be a light, even in the shelters. Listen, I thank you, I can go on and on, but I thank you.
Mr. Lane, we appreciate it, absolutely. You know, one of the things that, that Ms. Counsel has discussed once or twice, without a policy before it, but we've discussed homelessness, you know, it occurs to me that our health department is, has a talking point right now that we have more homeless persons in Wycomico County than at any stage previously. Part of that has to do with population growth, and part of it has to do with not addressing the problem. So I think there's certainly something there that we need to address. You know, I think in the coming months, this council or this council and the mayor can talk about ways to do that in partnership with the health department, state agencies, and, and really the community at large as well, and the county. But there, there are quite a few communities that have had some real success recently with housing-first policies, which I think is something we need to look into. Housing-first policies, you know, they don't care whether your, your issue is mental health, finances, or drug addiction, you get, you get the person in house first, or in, in housing first, and it addresses the homelessness issue. May not address the root issue, but then it also affixes you to an address where you can then begin to address the other issues.
But I have a petition of over two-hundred people within the community that wants to bring about a change, that want to be an uplift, an empowerment.
And we should talk about that, we should talk about that. So I know you've got everyone on Counsel's email address, let's, let's get in touch very soon and continue this conversation, we can even put it on Council's agenda, okay? Thank you, Mr. Lane. Next, we have Melissa Wilson, the subject is Trails.
Well, she's coming up, I'll just share that the Lower Shore Alliance, go ahead, the Lower Shore Alliance does do a lot of those types of skills training.
Um, why didn't I be first, but lucky me. Okay, I'm here because there's a growing concern in the community that the trails at Nailor Mill are going to be turned into playing fields for baseball, and there are a lot of other resources for that in town and other places that could be further developed, and that is where the water comes from for the city, so that's a concern. And I think Joan is also going to speak to that a little bit more thoroughly about the water, and the water quality, and the runoff, and potential pollution that could contaminate the city water, because that water is, the way, the way it works with the water being filtered, because it's nature trails, that helps to keep the water clean. But then again, there's another part of the community that's worried that the trails are going to be gone, because Salisbury doesn't have a lot of trails for mountain biking, exploring with young children, running, and just getting back in touch with nature. So that's a concern with a lot of parents and people that are just active in the community. So I'm here on both fronts, as a person worried about water quality and safety and wishing my children to have somewhere to run and experience wilderness and just enjoy the outdoors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up we have Trent Swanson, same subject.
Thank you, President and Counsel, appreciate the opportunity to be here, I'm actually part of the running community, also biking community, and excited to be here to actually talk about why it's beneficial to keep Nailor Mills, keep the trail in the City of Salisbury. I know there's been some talk of why we should have it given to the county, or why there could be other options. I read in the Daily Times about a month ago that there were other options in, in the northern part of the, the city, eastern side of the city, where they could be placed there. Right now, Nailor Mill is one of the few places where you can actually get out and enjoy the trails, and enjoy the benefits of being outside and being active. And there's a collective study of eighteen different, different studies where they put them together, looking at the economic benefits of trails, and this goes not only for Nailor Mills, but also you can look at for Rails-to-Trails throughout the community, I know that's been brought up before. But there's many different reasons why you could have Rails-to-Trails, or you can actually have the Nailor Mill trails in our community, why they should stay in here. And there's basically ten bullet points I'll share real quickly. First one is trails increase the value of nearby properties. Second, trails boost the spending at local businesses, if these are bringing them through. Also, trails make community more attractive to, to live, and I'm going to touch on this a little bit more, when considering where to move home buyers, rank walking and biking as one of the most important features of, of a new community. And unfortunately, having lived in Salisbury, having lived in Delmar, and now living in Fruitland, the lack of sidewalks is dangerous not only for myself, but also for my children. Unfortunately, I see a lot of people driving distracted, text messaging, talking on the phone. I need a place where I can feel safe to take my kids and to take my family, take my friends, where I can be out, I'm not concerned as much getting hit by a car. And on these trails, right now, the trails that we do have, the limited amount, they have soft ground. have soft ground and instead of hard ground, less likely to get injured and less likely to be a, a concern for my, my family. Trails also influence business location relocation decisions. Companies often choose to locate in communities that offer high level amenities to employees, that's biking, running trails. They also, trails reduce medical costs by encouraging exercise and other healthy outdoor activities. I know as mentioned before about the safety of biking, but if someone's biking every day and they're being healthy, we got to look at the risk and benefits and weigh that and say, these are people that are getting healthier and we could love to promote healthy options here in the community. Um, trails also revaluableize depressed areas. If you look at places throughout DC and throughout other cities, they've had Rails to Trails that go through communities that were maybe on the downhill side and these things bringing them through, it brings new, smaller mom and pop type of stores, restaurants, cafes, great option. Also, they provide transportation options and cut fuel expenses. You can actually, right now, I live in, like I said, in Fruitland and there's a trail that goes to Walmart and I'll ride my bike there. In fact, I'll sometimes push the stroller with my kids, I have a five-year-old, a six-year-old and, and a just turned three-year-old. And there was one time where I took them all, it's two miles in, two miles back, but they loved it, it's family time and option to get out there. And, um, it also provides low and no cost recreation for families. I know there's some talk about putting in baseball and soccer, I've got three kids and to put them all in the team, right now, the option's up there, I can't just go up and play softball, you have to actually rent it, you have to have a team, and I don't have that. So to get up there, I can go right now, anytime, on the trails, take my family out there, it's free. Also, tax increase, trails increase tax revenue to the communities which they're located because they're bringing in options if they're going through the communities. And these benefits represent a huge economic return on investment in the trail project. So, I'm, I'm not asking to create more trails, I'm just asking if we can keep the trails we have in this community, we have less than I can count on my hand, and to keep those there for myself, for my future, for my children. I grew up on the eastern shore, I graduated from Y High and I plan to stay here as long as I can, and this is one thing that's keeping me around, the beautiful trails and the opportunity to, to be on them. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Trent.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Sarah Halcott.
Hello. Um, as you guys said earlier, sometimes when you're out, people just start asking you what your views are and start telling you what their views are. On third Friday, I was walking around and everyone was asking me about the Nailor Mill Park and what's going on with it. I decided to start an online petition and Saturday, Sunday and today, I got 187 signatures supporting keeping the Nailor Mill Forest. Personally, I haven't gone there in a few years, I have a young child and, uh, I'm just getting back to walking properly. Um, but I think it is an extremely valuable asset, both to have the trails and to have a forest that can filter through to the aquifer. Um, I think it would be an absolute shame if we did transfer that land to the county for softball. I'm sure you're going to hear other reasons as well and, and I hope that you can take the time to think about it and possibly change what you've already thought. If you would like a copy of the petition or the supporters or the almost 100 reasons that people have signed, I can either email it to you or I can leave it with you tonight. I thought about making five copies and I thought that would be somewhat redundant and a waste of the paper for the trees that we're trying to potentially save.
Right, email.
Um, so, I, I don't want to take too much of your time, I'm sure you have heard many reasons and I just wanted to add my voice to that and all the other people's voices who couldn't be here tonight.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Joan Malouf.
No surprise, I'm also here to talk about the Nailor Mill Park, which was acquired to protect the wellhead of our primary drinking water in the city. And, um, it is my understanding that, that, um, that park that's covered with beautiful forests and beautiful hiking trails is desired by the county to, um, remove the forest and put in ball fields. But they cannot do that unless the city council votes to approve that transfer. Is that correct?
There's, there's more steps, but that's, that is a step.
So, so you guys are critical, men and women, and so I'm here to, um, ask you to please be thoroughly educated before you make that decision. Um, there are a number of ways you could educate yourself. One would be by going out on the trails if you haven't. And I invite anyone who would like to go out on the trails with me tomorrow, 10:30 in the morning, I'll be at the, um, the parking lot of the Henry S. Parker Athletic Fields and we will walk the trails together and I'll show you those beautiful trails that the mountain biking people have, have built and maintained and the beautiful forest that surrounds those trails and the wildlife that lives there, the, the amazing fungus diversity and the insects and the birds and that you'll get to breathe the clean air. So please, before you make a vote, experience the trails. The other thing I ask you before you make a vote is to educate yourself on the groundwater. Don't take someone in Public Works word for it and say, oh, they'll say, oh, we're following all the regulations. Well, of course they're following the regulations, they have to follow the regulations. But I believe that the regulations, which are things like flammable's can't be buried over the Paleo Channel, I don't think that's enough to really ensure the precious resource. So, um, I would suggest that you read this document, which is the Hydrogeology and Simulation of Groundwater Flow in the Upper Wycomico River Basin, An Estimation of Contributing Areas in the City of Salisbury Wellfields, Wycomico County, Maryland. And if you read this and look at the diagrams, you will see that what they're talking about, the contributing area is, how long does it take a drop of water that falls over here to get into our drinking water well versus a drop of water over here? And you will learn that the closer to that drinking water well, the faster it's going to get into our water. And so that means the Nailor Mill Park Forest. I would urge you also to get in an expert and I would say, I would not be happy with the expert, Mark Eisner, because he sat right here in this room and I asked him about whether the forest made a difference over that well and he said he didn't know. And he also mentioned a number of times that he was the low bidder. So I would suggest instead, if you were going to have an expert in, to have, um, David Andreas in, who wrote this document, I don't know him, I've never spoken to him, um, he is with the, um, Geological Survey. And he also, when he was contacted by a reporter for this article, what's at stake with the Salisbury complex, you know, says, this is someone well educated in groundwater, much better than I am. He said, um, "From my point of view, it would be prudent to err on the side of caution." And what that means is leaving in the forest and not having it cleared for ball fields. So, um, the last piece is to consider the urban tree canopy. So many municipalities throughout our country have, are bemoaning the loss of their urban tree canopy, which is so important for carbon reduction, for oxygen, for clean air, for the clean water. And so if you vote to allow the county to have this land and they remove that forest, there goes a huge chunk of Salisbury's urban tree canopy. So you can plant trees here and there, but it's not going to make up for that beautiful older forest. Thank you for listening to me and I hope also that you'll have a, um, a public hearing on this issue that's advertised well ahead of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, lastly, we have Mr. Gabe Mateko.
Hello, Counsel, um, I'm Gabriel Mateko, I live in Sharp Town, Maryland, uh, business owner, I own expert house movers, um, friends with Trent and Melissa, Joey, a lot of people in here. Um, I grew up here, uh, on the eastern shore, uh, went to Bennett, I was on the cross-country team. Um, my friend Joey over here was a teammate of mine, our coach said, you guys can do a course for, the Bennett course, anywhere you want. And, uh, we both like the outdoors, we're not conventional sports people, we're not very coordinated, we're kind of goofy, we're tall and skinny, we're not basketball players, we're not football players. So we said, you know, we like the outdoors, we like running around and, you know, biking and doing stuff like that, that's, you know, don't get girls real excited. So we decided we were going to do our cross-country course, right, in the downtown trails, um, right, in the city of Salisbury. Um, and it was awesome and I can't believe our coach let us do it, there's roots, people could trip and die, you know, there's fires, what's going to happen? Um, but he did and it was great and everybody thought, said it was the coolest course I'd ever run on. And I don't think a year or two after that, they stopped running there, because it's just kind of hard to put on, you know, it's in the woods and things like that, but it was awesome. Um, I'm an avid mountain biker, I'm an avid runner, I love the outdoors, I do lots of hiking, um, and I try and, um, let my children experience that as much as possible. I think it's important. Um, so obviously I'm segueing into the Nailor Mill Project, which you would think could be beat to death, but I think it's important for everybody here on the council to understand a few things. Um, first of all, it's big picture stuff, it's vision stuff, it's stuff that, um, supersedes one tenure or, um, you know, one legislative cycle. I do a lot of construction work, um, occasionally I'll work with the government, things that get me personally frustrated with any government projects is the lack of ability to see past a fiscal year because they have money they need to spend or they have agendas that have to be, for whatever reason, taken care of or wrapped up. Um, but that doesn't cut it when it comes to managing a city or trying to turn around an area like Salisbury. I mean, as you guys have seen, there's been a lot of people outside of government, um, young people that want to live here, they want to stay here, they could go anywhere, they went to college all over the country, but they come back here, um, and they're trying to make a difference. And, uh, that vision is, is why do people come to the eastern shore? Um, a lot of them come here to go to Ocean City, um, so they want buffets and beach. Uh, but a lot of other people come to, because you can get that anywhere, you can go to Wildwood or you can, you know, you go to Virginia Beach. But a lot of people come to the eastern shore because it's one of the least developed wild natural places surrounded by tons of huge metropolitan areas, okay? It's, it's, and it's, and there's a lot of value in that. Um, a lot of people talk about agricultural preservation, all this other stuff. There's so much, uh, you know, open land out there, it's, uh, it's crazy, especially on the eastern shore, we have tons of fields. We don't have places like Nailor Mill, um, they're just not there. Um, I, through high school, growing up now, I'm 36 years old, um, I went there all the time, I go there all the time, whether it's to bike or to run, my kid would come, Will, we were out there today to tell you how much he likes it, but this cuts into his bedtime, so he's not going to be able to make it. Um, but it's an asset that, um, unless you've been out there and you enjoy it, um, it's hard to realize. And like Ms. Malouf said, I mean, yeah, I want to go out on the trail and walk around for six hours and get hit by bugs, I'm not doing that. Well, you don't have to do that, go out there for five minutes, it's a fantastic place. Um, it's beautiful, when you're back there, you could be anywhere in this country, in a state park or national park, but you're not, you're in Salisbury. Um, it doesn't cost you guys, that I know, anything to have that. You've had a trail system there for 15 years that you didn't even realize most of you. Um, people are keeping this up out of their own, I mean, I've got a cut on my hand from a machete, um, because they like being there, they're not being asked to be there, this trail system is being supported by the people that use it. And people come from Worcester County, I have a friend who lives up, um, you know, in Newark, Delaware, and he comes down here to mountain bike. Um, and so it's, uh, it's definitely an important asset and when you get back in there, it's dynamic. Um, the eastern shore is flat, it's not flat back there, you got, you know, 20, 30 feet of elevation gain. I mean, it just goes up and down along the creek there, it's just a fantastic place. Um, and I think it's something that's, that's worth looking at. The seagull century, why do people come here in droves to bike? Because it's beautiful. Why do they go to Blackwater Land Management Area? Because it's beautiful. Um, you know, why do they go to the Pokemoke Forest? Why do they go to Acetig? Why is there all this ecotourism stuff, which we haven't even scratched the surface of what we could be doing here on the shore and taking advantage of? Um, it's for stuff like that and, um, a place like that is perfect, it's concentrated, it's got parking, it's close to amenities, I mean, it's just an amazing place to be able to go in and, 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 and get in touch with nature, enjoy yourself and, and have a great time. Um, as far as safety goes and things like that, I mean, I really don't even feel that should be a concern. Um, getting hit by cars, I have three children, biking, walking, running, anything in a metropolitan area is way scarier than walking around on a trail. Um, and even biking on a trail, people that run or that bike, um, they do it at their own ability, at their own speed so that they can feel safe. Last thing that somebody wants to do is a faceplant to a tree or do something ridiculous and, you know, so, I mean, it's, it's a natural preservation thing, I mean, it's not really even something that, that should be a big worry. Um, and the other thing that I wanted to talk about too was the alternate options that are being looked at for this space. Um, I, I'm not super well-versed in what's going on here, but I know a little bit from what I've read. Softball, baseball, like I told you before, uh, my natural abilities to, to catch and throw balls are very limited, so I'm not real big into those sports, but I know a lot of people are and I have a lot of friends that have kids that are. And I know that, um, these tournaments, um, they come, they go, um, it depends on who has the best place, who's offering the best deal. Um, I would liken it to the D-Tour to Ocean City, okay? They did a big push to get that there, it's one event out of, you know, 20 or 30 that Ocean City has, it makes them very successful. But they put a lot of money into it and then the very next year, they said, you know, we may not be back, okay? They, they did come back, but then this year, they didn't come back, okay? Um, I drive all over the place for my work, I work everywhere, from Massachusetts to Virginia to, you know, I'm, I'm everywhere. Um, and I see softball and soccer fields everywhere, not on the shore, all over the place. And then somewhere in Bridgeville, they've got a sign that says, "Home of the World Series", something, something, I don't even know what it is. But I don't know how many World Series they can be, but apparently there was a World Series softball something or other that they wanted to do over here, if you guys have the field space. Um, you know, what's that, one year, two years? I, I don't know. I mean, the next year, they could not come. And then what? So that, that money there that you guys were banking on or that the county was banking on and, and, you know, that's, that's gone. Building, uh, projects and making the eastern shore an attractive place for people to come or the people that live here to, to, to enjoy, that's a sustainable, long-term economic benefit and it's also a, um, it, it's not only an economic benefit, but it's a benefit for people that live here, their lifestyle and, you know, where they live. Um, and so it's huge and, um, you know, Acetig, all those, those types of, of events, they're not, they're not box events, you know, a softball tournament, that's like an Applebee's, okay? That's like a Target, that's like a Walmart. These are just generic, uh, events that, they don't even mean anything. I have friends that do all these traveling leagues and I asked them, I said, what's the difference between the A League and the B League or what's the difference between this thing? He goes, oh, you pay more to get into that, that division and the trophy's bigger. It has nothing to do with competition, it's all, it's all a money-making thing, it's all fake. Um, when you go out into nature and you bring your kids up to appreciate nature and to go out and bike and that's something they carry with them their whole entire lives, I hope to be biking and running and mountain biking till I'm 60 years old or 70 years old. That's something I've been doing until I was 10. Um, I take my kids back there all the time, they love it. So, um, I just really think that, like I said, the big picture, um, of what this means to this area and what you're trying to cultivate here or what the, the community is trying to cultivate in Salisbury is important, okay? What gets people excited in this area is, you know, the downtown, um, is these types of events and these types of things, um, not urban sprawl and everything that's going on on the north side. And I liken this softball project to that, it's the same kind of thing. Um, you know, nobody's going to move here because the World Series softball tournament's here one weekend a year. Um, you go to the complex, that parking lot is vacant most of the time, except for when a tournament is there or a couple of games are being played. But there's a little corner, okay, down by where the trailhead is and you'll always see a couple of cars there, okay? And that's, uh, that's a testament to, um, what it is to the people around here and, and what it could be, I don't think that even the, um, education to the community, most people don't even know it's there. And if they did and if people actually had, um, the top of mind that what was there and what it is and what you could do there, or if it was connected in some form or fashion to other places, um, green areas, I think it would be utilized, um, 100 times more than it is now, so. Thanks for the time to talk, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just a couple of thoughts before we, we close. Um, uh, first of all, I appreciate Mr. Mateko, um, I appreciate you being here and we know your commitment to, uh, to running. I know it mostly from being a long distance behind you, uh, throughout high school or the years that we overlapped. But, um, I, I think a couple of things are worth, um, addressing here. You know, first and foremost, and, and Ms. Malouf spoke to the city's role in this and, you know, the city does have a role in this and we have, we have to. Um, and, uh, that being said, it's not our project. If we were advocating, if I were advocating this project, you'd know it, we'd be leading on it, we'd be out there, we'd hold community meetings, we'd be talking about it and I'm really disappointed that there hasn't been a forum or a setting to do that. Um, there was at one point, um, a scheduled public hearing that Mayor Irtan scheduled, um, through communication- Through communication or miscommunication, there was a message that the county had withdrawn its request, and it was canceled. So we never had that opportunity to talk about it. So this is, this is great, but I think this is just a start in terms of that conversation, because, you know, this is, this is a small fraction, I think, of the dialogue that people want to have and that people are having. So I appreciate that point, and I think, you know, I agree. That said, I think it also needs to be talked to, this subject needs to be spoken to with the county. County executive and county council members need to hear from you. They need to know what you believe on this. I've had a county councilman speak to us twice in the last three weeks, and at one point, it was, "Why are you standing in the way of progress?". And a few weeks later, it was, "Boy, we've got to kill that thing." So, there are changing opinions in the county, and I think it's really important that they hear your perspectives. Hold on one second. So that being said, a couple of things I want to speak to. The vision that, Gabe, that you spoke to is a vision that I wholeheartedly believe in. And I do believe recreation and ecotourism has a role, a very important role, when we talk about revitalization as a 21st century community of trying to attract millennials. Yet, urban development, urban revitalization is a big part of that, and the integration of nature with city is another part of that. Water quality is, I think, important to everyone here, which is one of the reasons why we added some stipulations to our conversation with the county. There were original stipulations, and those were that an MOU had to be signed between the county and the Eastern Shore Chapter of International Mountain Biking Association, which my understanding is signed, which protects and requires, in fact, that YCIMBA be the managing partner of the trails that exist and would exist. We had additional stipulations at that time where we knew very little about mature trees, designing where bridge landings would go over the water, protecting trails near the basin, the creek basin, and securing trails on the other side of the creek. Now, all of those things, we know more today. So one of the things that we did was, we said that in order for us to further consider this project, we would have to, the county would have to pay for and retain the services of an independent hydrogeologist, who would both had to confirm for us that there was no measurable impact on the water quality in the Paleo Channel from the proposed project. I have no idea how achievable that is. I don't know if it's possible to build a softball field or eight softball fields and not have a measurable impact around a wellhead. I don't know, I'm not a hydrogeologist. And then they would also have to recommend best practices for protecting the Paleo wellhead. I'm reading, by the way, from a letter, August 21st, that city administrator Tom Stevenson sent to Mr. Strausberg. The city would also then add restrictive covenants, a conservation easement on any part of the property that was not developed. We would also require that a most recent copy of the concept plan be sent to the city. And the stipulations that we added on that concept were that now, the original plan be modified to reduce the impact on the forest. That's something that the council members agreed to. And I don't mean to speak for you, Laura, for councilmen, but I think all five council members felt that that was important, whether or not we supported it. Which would be, hopefully, a reduction, and what we're hearing is a reduction from what would have been eighty-five percent of the existing tree cover would be cut to fifteen percent of the existing tree cover would be cut, and it would be our request that it would be replaced. That is not equivalent, but we believe it would be a nod in the right direction. So that being said, those are, those are some of the things that the city has put on the table in order to move forward. It's my belief that anything that does move forward, if anything moves forward, it would be a situation where the trails would be protected and the Paleo Channel would be protected. And I don't think we're comfortable moving forward if those two, if those two stipulations are not met. So, those are, those are some of the things that we believe. Now, we're also hearing, and I think it's worth noting, we're hearing from the other side of this argument, that twenty million dollars a year right now comes into the county in expenses in our hotels, restaurants, that is directly attributable to attendees of the USSSA tournaments. Now, twenty million dollars sounds like a lot of money, twenty million dollars is a lot of money. I think the greatest challenge we're facing as a community right now, and we are facing a few, but the greatest is probably economic. That being said, twenty million dollars is actually a very small portion of our tourism revenue in this community, of the economic impact of tourism on this community. So, it's a big number, it's a real number, but it's not, you know, don't let anybody tell you that it is all tourism. So it is just a part of that. We've also heard the statement that, we have heard the statement that these sports tournaments are a passing fad. I can't speak to that, I don't think any of us is qualified to speak to that, but we've heard that message. So we recognize that there is that question as well, whether or not this is a lasting economic contributor to our community. So, that's kind of a question that we don't know the answer to, but we, you know, and I certainly take your guidance and your advice on that. So, all of that being said, the long-term economic impact beyond a fiscal year is certainly important to us. I also think we have found in this community that, and I can speak to it, we can speak to it with the skate park, that if the state is providing funding for something and wants to provide funding for something, as they've done with this project, a million dollars, if due diligence has not been done, or if the political will is not there to make the project happen, that money might stay. And it stayed for us when due diligence was done and the political will did exist later down the road. So I don't think, I don't think we're in as much of a rush as our friends at the county claim that we are. You know, two and a half years after the state committed money to the skate park, they still had it, even though it had long since expired.
In a different location.
In a different, in a different location, that's right.
It was moved, and they still allowed that.
So, I think, you know, the letter that we've sent, the two letters that we've sent, you know, that's setting the gates that we expect the county to walk through and meet. That being said, you know, the conversation is moving forward, so I want to have it as publicly as possible. Any other comments before we adjourn?
One quick comment to the longevity of that. It was also shared by the county executive and Mr. Strausberg that the USSSA won't sign more than a one-year contract. So, that, you speak about the zoo tour, I mean, the Do Tour, and we're not looking at a ten-year contract of twenty million dollars a year, we're looking at year by year by year, and so that's a concern as well.
Anything else? All right. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your input on that subject tonight, we appreciate it. Thank you for staying longer than we had intended, but we appreciate the conversation.
Thank you.
With that, we adjourn.